The Monday, August 21st, 2023 City of Vandelia Council Meeting is now called to order. We'll start with a moment of reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have the approval of minutes. Council, you've had an opportunity to review the council's study session minutes of July 17th, along with the council meeting minutes of July 17th. Are there any comments or corrections? Being none, they stand approved. And that brings us to Communications, Petitions, and Awards. And the first item is the introduction and oath of office of Police Sergeant Brian Crim. Mr. Went.
Excellent. Thank you, Your Honor. Sergeant Crim, will you please stand up? The, uh, this is Brian Crim. Brian Crim wrote a seven-page cover letter detailing how he would work towards the Vandelia Division of Police's department goals and the citywide policy goals. It is one of the best documents that I've ever seen an employee produce at work. And so, Brian, I, I'm so proud of you. In this promotion, it's so well-deserved. And so, Brian has been a, he's Butler High grad. He has been a detective and police officer since 2006 here. He's been a watch, acting watch supervisor, range training officer, field training officer, and he's been on bike patrol. Brian was a fire and EMS captain in the Vandelia Division of Fire from 2001 to April 2011. And prior to that, he was a police officer at Butler Township. Brian holds a master's degree in criminal justice administration and also a bachelor of science, where he did and performed really well. And at one period, he also was a corrections officer at the Sheriff's Department. It's, it's no surprise to see Brian get promoted, I don't think. In 2015, he received a meritorious service award from Chief Knight and Sergeant Steinbruner for saving the life of a female who was actively choking on food during the airshow that year. And so, that's my introduction for Brian Crim for you, and I will go ahead and administer the oath.
Brian, you can relax. The, uh, do you want to bring your family?
I don't know what to do with my hands.
Mrs. Crim, if you want somebody to take a video, I'm sure Rock Brown would be glad to do that for you. Ben Morton would be glad to do that for you.
There he is. Okay.
I, Brian Crim, sound this way.
I, Brian Crim, sound this way.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And of the state of Ohio.
And of the state of Ohio.
That I will in all respects.
That I will in all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the charter.
Of the charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the City of Vandelia.
Of the City of Vandelia.
And will faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Police Sergeant.
Of Police Sergeant.
Within the Division of Police.
Within the Division of Police.
Congratulations, Senator. All right, thank you. Congratulations. All right, next we have the introduction of Parks and Recreation Administrative Assistant Sherri McConaughey.
All right, Sherri, I'm having a hard time seeing you hiding back there, but I do see Nate. So, Sherri McConaughey, Sherri is our new full-time administrative assistant in the Department of Parks and Recreation. We had had turnover in the parks maintenance side, and so have merged and moved around a little bit with the part-time funds to make this one full-time and stable position. Mrs. McConaughey is a resident of Butler Township. She's been with the City of Vandelia in the Parks Department since August 2020. And she came in as a part-time human resources admin assistant in the city manager's office in 2019. She holds a Bachelor's of Science in Operation Management from Wright State. And one of the things that I'm so excited about, but I have not personally leveraged yet, is this resume that I'm holding. She made this in Excel. She is an Excel wizard and can do all the formulas and charts. And everybody looks to her for her superior organization, and so I'm very excited for her to be on full-time. And thank you so much for joining those ranks.
Thank you. All right, next we have a proclamation to honor Donna Shirley, so I'd like to invite the family up to the podium, where we have a proclamation.
First of all, on behalf of city council staff, we'd like to offer our sincere condolences for the passing of Donna. We do have a proclamation I'd like to present to you and the family. I'm going to go ahead and read each line of it, because it is so important and touching. Whereas, the City of Vandelia seeks to recognize and celebrate those individuals who've made a lasting impact on our city through their good works and deeds. Whereas, Donna Shirley was a Vandelia resident for 62 years, moving the city, moving to the city in 1961, following her marriage to Jack Shirley. And whereas, Donna Shirley impacted the lives of thousands of people through her work with the Vandelia Preschool, and she readyed multiple generations of young children to enter elementary school. Whereas, Donna Shirley volunteered in the Vandelia community with organizations such as the Butler Music Association, the Vandelia Senior Center, Butler School PTA, the Vandelia Butler Historical Society, all while being an active, engaged mother to her daughters Laura and Jennifer, and loving grandmother to her granddaughters Alyssa, Amanda, Heather, and Dominique. Whereas, Donna Shirley was a loving and faithful wife to her husband, Jack, for 62 years, and supported his additional workload as a member of the Vandelia City Council for 30 years. Whereas, the members of the Vandelia City Council were profoundly saddened to learn Donna's passing on Monday, June 5th, 2023, at the age of 83. Whereas, it is the wish of the City Council to recognize Donna Shirley for her many years of service to the people of Vandelia. Now, therefore, I, Richard Herbst, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Vandelia, do hereby proclaim tomorrow, Tuesday, August 22nd, as Donna Shirley Day in the City of Vandelia.
Couldn't, huh?
Yep, now, now's a great time to step out.
Thank you very much.
And anybody not wishing to stay for the entire council meeting, naturally, we're going to do lots of really cool stuff here, but it's all right, it's an all-right time to go.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, we have no public hearing, and that brings us to comments from interested citizens. So if someone would like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comment. And we have no one. Brings us to the city manager's report, where we have some information items. Mr. Went.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. The city offices will be closed on Monday, September 4th, for Labor Day. The recreation center will be open from 7:00 a.m. to noon for the fitness area gymnasium and track only. This week, I intend to meet with the Miami Valley Communications Council regarding the potential for running an RFP for gas aggregation. You'll recall that when we did the electric aggregation RFP, that seemed to be suboptimal. And so, at that point, the consortium decided not to proceed. I'd like to congratulate the Departments of Parks and Recreation, Fire, and Public Works on having a zero-loss year. And they recently had a breakfast that was put on by the Miami Valley Risk Management Association, the insur, the city's insurance carrier, to celebrate that. I informed you after last week we met, we sent out a press release last week regarding the Super 8 motel. And I provided that consent agreement. I have received some calls from residents about that. And so, we've taken the time to go ahead and explain the decision-making that went into that. We do want to work with our business community, but it is really important that we provide enforcement mechanisms for ensuring that our laws and ordinances are followed. And so, a lot of work went into establishing that permit process. We didn't want to have to revoke that. We did. But over the next three years, we'll be strongly monitoring the Super 8 for compliance with the 30 or so, nearly 30 items that we have. Place Dynamics recently conducted the downtown market study. They conducted stakeholder interviews with some of you as elected officials, business owners, and regional development professionals. Really thankful that we've had so many business owners who volunteered their time to participate in this analysis. Looking at the public works facility, that's one of the items that we discussed in the study session relating to the rezoning for public facilities. Our teams interviewed six of the 12 firms that submitted statements of qualifications for design in the new public works facility on Northwoods Boulevard, east of Kroger. We did get that land donated, which was great, and valued at an estimated $900,000. And we've gone through the process of checking references, and I intend, at some point next month, to bring to you consideration for developing a professional services agreement for design and the costs associated thereto. The Hometown Heroes recently featured the Range Task Force, and Sergeant Holbert was featured in that or included in it. We have received some correspondence regarding the northbound Dixie school light flasher for the school zone. We've ordered a bigger battery for that flasher. It tends to die after about 15 minutes. And so, that'll come in tomorrow or Wednesday, and so we'll work on getting that installed and updated. Also, last week, we held a great employee appreciation picnic. We had eight retirees attend, and so it was really enjoyed by everybody. Our next employee appreciation event, which you're all invited to, will be at the Senior Center on September 20th. That'll be our taco bar. Also, I'm pleased to report that we updated our dress code recently to allow for showing tattoos, some tattoos and some piercings with those restrictions. We haven't received any complaints for the public, from the public as a result of that, and of course, the employees are really glad about that. I'd like to call out Chief Althouse. He recently worked with the county administrator, Michael Colbert, the chief porter, Sheriff Strick, and a couple of other individuals to secure funding. That's $75,000 for the Mobile Crisis Responder Program. And really happy to have that coming in. Looking at the totality of outside funding, that brings us up right now to about $4.6 million between 2023 and anticipated in '24. I, I also will point out, let's see here, that we took delivery on our rapid flashing beacons. We ordered those many months ago. These are the strobe lights where you push the button for crossing at Demet and Helkey and East Alkaline Springs between the Art Park and the entrance to the high school. And in addition to the Copperfield subdivision neighborhood crossing to the rec center. Those have come in a lot of pieces, and so it'll take some assembly. We would have liked to have had that in by the first day of school, but that'll be a little bit delayed. And also, I'd congratulate the Police Division on receiving the recommendation for another, another renewed, their 10th accreditation for the Commission on Accreditation of Law Enforcement Agencies. That concludes my report. I, that concludes my report, and there's one action item, of which I would request a simple motion. That action item is for Ms. Stephanie Wilmouth to be, to be appointed to the Vandelia Arts Council.
Can I have a motion?
I move that we appoint Stephanie Wilmouth to the Vandelia Arts Council.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Farce, and a second by Councilman Ayers to appoint Stephanie Wilmouth to the Vandelia Arts Council. Call the roll.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbst.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. We have no old business, and that brings us to our first resolution of this evening, that being Resolution 23-R-51. Mr. McDonald, by title only.
A resolution waiving the formal bidding process and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and enter into a professional services contract with OHM Advisors for the purpose of performing architectural design work for the Arts Park Amphitheater Project.
Okay, Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. The 2020 Vision Vandelia Comprehensive Plan prioritized the city's investment in sense of place and vibrancy. The Vandelia Arts Council, with the support of the city, generous private donors, the Vandelia Butler Historical Society, Vandelia Butler City School District, have all partnered to improve quality of life in town by investing in the arts. This has taken the form of transient and permanent art fixtures, outdoor performance, and the first phase of construction at Art Park. The construction of the Art Park Amphitheater, including the stage and band shell, accessible seating and appurtenances thereto, will provide an outdoor venue for the community to gather and our students to perform, and it will improve overall livability. The city's received outside funding in the form of grants and direct appropriations for this project. The city applied for and received the capital budget bill funding of $300,000. OHM Advisors has partnered with the City of Vandelia on both the 2020 Vision Vandelia Comprehensive Plan and was the local partner in the Park and Rec Master Plan that was recently adopted. And so, it's our understanding that, based on OHM's understanding of our community and project scope, entering into a professional services agreement is my recommendation for planning, design, engineering, compilation of bid documents, and associated processes relating to the Art Park Amphitheater Design Project. This addresses the citywide policy goals, including small-city, big opportunity, enhance infrastructure, fiscal sustainability, trust and confidence, sharpen the saw, and vibrant.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution 23-R-51.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley, and a second by Vice Mayor Lewis to approve Resolution 23-R-51 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbst.
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 23-R-52.
A resolution accepting the delegation of activities from Montgomery County, Ohio Board of County Commissioners for the 2023 sanitary sewer improvement project in an amount not to exceed $50,000 from the date of execution through June 30th, 2024.
All right, thank you. Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. The City of Vandelia was made aware that Montgomery County has available leftover funds from the fiscal year 22 Community Development Block Grant Program. Staff requested to use these funds to assist in the sanitary sewer slip lining project in our neighborhood that qualifies for CDBG funds. Montgomery County has agreed to award us $50,000 in funds for our project. The city's required to approve the presented resolution to enter into an agreement with Montgomery County in order to receive those funds. The City of Vandelia has completed the engineering and design of the project in-house, and will be ready to advertise for bids immediately upon signing the agreement. The total estimated cost for the project is $100,000. That's it.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 23-R-52 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follak, and a second by Councilwoman Farce to approve Resolution 23-R-52 as presented. Are there any comments from council? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbst.
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 23-R-53.
A resolution to seek membership in the AARP Network of Age-Friendly Communities.
Okay, Mr. Went.
The City of Vandelia has approved, has been approved for a $15,000 livable and age-friendly community grant. This grant will be used for assessing the community by conducting a survey, holding stakeholder meetings, and listening sessions to understand how residents and stakeholders view livability in Vandelia. The city's required to join AARP, the Network of Age-Friendly Communities, as part of this grant award. That membership is free, and I'd, of course, like to congratulate Assistant City Manager Holloway on obtaining that $15,000 grant.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 23-R-53.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Ayers, and a second by Councilwoman Farce to approve Resolution 23-R-53 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbst.
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. We have one ordinance in its first reading, that being Ordinance 23-22.
All right, I will. An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $6 million for the purpose of paying the cost of improving the municipal public transportation system, including National Road US 40 and Dog Lake Road by constructing, reconstructing, extending, opening, widening, grading, draining, curbing, paving, and resurfacing. In site preparation, installing stormwater, sanitary sewer, and water improvements, and acquiring any necessary interests in the real property, together with all incidental work and all related appurtenances thereto, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Went.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. I'll let some of the law director's statement stand. The one thing that I would point out about this in the first reading is that this is for running water and wastewater within our municipal corporate limit west of Dog Lake Road, and if you will, out to the, where the driving range is, the Gulf Driving Range. The other thing that I'll point out, and I presented on debt service at a recent meeting, is that this will likely be paid from utility revenues that wasn't necessarily included in the, in one of the memos that was presented before by another staff member. But debt service from this project could be paid for by a combination of utility revenues, infrastructure fees, tax increment financing associated with development, et cetera. This project, I do not believe, is likely to result in direct general fund expenditures.
Thank you. Okay. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Ordinance 23-22 in the first reading.
Second.
I need a second.
I seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
You did.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilman Follak, and a second by Councilman Woods to approve Ordinance 23-22 in its first reading. Are there any comments?
I have one in its first reading, and while we've had this in our sights for quite some time, and we've got water already out there west, it's, I, I think I, I'm going to ask to hit the brakes on this, maybe just for a minute when we go to the second reading, in so much as we're going through our budgetary process. And I, I'm a little bit jaundiced on the approving bonds right now for $6 million, and we have some budgetary items that I don't have a, or as clear a picture on as I should. And I think Mr. Went accurately points out that there, there will be tapping fees, there are tax, the tiff, if we tiff it. There are other revenues that are going to service that debt of the $6 million, and it's not going to come directly out of, or most of it. But that's, we think that's going to happen, but we don't know that that's going to happen. And $6 million more of debt today is something that I'd kind of like to evaluate just a little bit more. But for tonight's purposes, certainly approve it in the first reading. Just to let you know where I may be coming from in the next several number of weeks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbst.
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. We have a couple of ordinances in our second reading, the first one being Ordinance 23-16. Mr. McDonald.
An ordinance to amend Part IV Traffic Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Vandelia by amending Chapter 434 by adding a new section, 434.012, dealing with driving while texting as a primary offense.
Thank you. Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ohio Governor Mike DeWine signed Senate Bill 288 into law on January 3, 2023, making distracted driving a primary offense and giving law enforcement more tools to combat distracted driving and saving lives by preventing crashes. Ohio adopted the new traffic law to address distracted driving under Ohio Revised Code 4511.204. I'm recommending that the city enact an ordinance that mirrors the Ohio Revised Code and our codified ordinances on traffic laws. The proposed ordinance addresses drivers in Vandelia using, holding, and touching their cell phones and other electronic devices while driving, causing them to be less aware of the roads in traffic. The drafted legislation under City Codified Ordinance 434.012, titled Texting While Driving, will authorize VPD officers to enforce distracted driving offenses under the city code in order to keep our streets safe. The provisions in Section 434.012 shall not be enforced until 30 days after the effective date date of this ordinance. There are several exceptions to this ordinance, which officers will take into consideration when enforcing the distracted driving law and mirror the Ohio Revised Code.
All right, thank you. Since this is an ordinance in a second reading, I'm gonna open a public hearing, so if anyone would like to comment on this ordinance, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your comment. Being done, I'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Ordinance 23-16 in the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Ayers, and a second by Councilman Folick to approve Ordinance 23-16 in its second reading. Any comments?
Yeah, I, I've got one comment. I found it rather interesting, because my eldest daughter, who lives in Columbus, just got ticketed for this very offense last week, so it's good.
Thank you, Bob. Learned it from her dad. Please call the roll quickly.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion passes seven-zero. Next, we have Ordinance 23-18 in its second reading.
An ordinance amending Condition 5 of Ordinance 22-27 to grant additional time for commencement of construction of the Redwood Vandelia Development Sub Area A PUD.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Your Honor, the applicant, PVL Investments LLC, has requested an extension of time on their planned unit development, final development plan. The city code requires that construction commence within 12 months of approval. Citing current industry and market trends, the applicant has requested a one-year extension.
Thank you. Since this is a ordinance in a second reading, I'll open a public hearing, so if anyone would like to comment on this, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your comment. Being done, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move.
Go ahead.
I'll move to approve Ordinance 23-18 in the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick, and a second by Vice Mayor Lewis to approve Ordinance 23-18 in its second reading. Any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods?
No.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion passes seven-zero.
Six-one.
Six-one, I'm sorry. I, I'm sorry, I can't hear, someone's down here.
That's okay.
Okay, we do have two emergency ordinance, the first one being Emergency Ordinance 23-20. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance approving individual assessment amounts and directing the Finance Director or her designee to certify the amounts to the county auditor for collection and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Your Honor, this emergency ordinance assesses properties for delinquent accounts related to stormwater, fees, trash collection, delinquent sewer and water, and/or wheat cutting.
Thank you. And since this is a emergency ordinance, I'll open a public hearing. If anyone would like to comment on this, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your comment. Being done, I'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Ordinance 23-20 as an emergency.
Circle.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fars, and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve Ordinance 23-20 as an emergency. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion passes seven-zero. Next, we have Emergency Ordinance 23-21.
An ordinance to revise appropriations for current expenses and others, other expenditures of the city of Vandelia, Montgomery County, Ohio, during the calendar year ending December 31, 2023, and amending Ordinance 22-42 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the request for approval of a supplemental appropriation. We've outlined those reasons tonight in the study session. We outlined some of the changes that were put in related to reimbursements or just timing between the, getting short up numbers between the study session and the regular session. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you. You have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Ordinance, Emergency Ordinance 23-21 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick, and a second by Councilman Blakesley to approve Ordinance 23-21 as an emergency. Call the roll.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion passes seven-zero. It brings us to reports from boards and commissions. Council received the Boards of Zoning Appeals Meeting minutes of July 12, the Vandelia Arts Council Meeting minutes of July 18, the Board of Zoning Appeal Meeting minutes of July 26. Are there any comments? All right, and that brings us to the July 2023 bill listing in the amount of $5,904,632.73 with expenses over $50,000, and the July purchase card detail in the amount of $21,942.66. Are there any comments? All right, and that brings us to council comments, and we'll start with Mr. McDonald.
I just have a housekeeping thing, Your Honor. I'm sorry, I was a little bit distracted. We did do the public hearing for the appropriations ordinance, right? I just didn't check my box, so I'm...
I believe I did.
Okay.
You guys were paying attention, weren't you? I did? All right.
I, I didn't want to have to come back next time for that one, so that's all I have. Thank you, and I apologize for snoozing on the job.
Bob does it all the time. All right, Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. It's a privilege and honor to serve.
Thank you. Councilwoman Woods?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Councilman Blakesley?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilman Folick?
Just congratulations to Sergeant Krim on his promotion, and to reiterate, City Manager's comments to the Parks and Rec Department, and Fire Division, and Public Works on the zero loss for last year, which is a, a big feat, and we appreciate their risk management practices that keep us out of insurance issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fars?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Councilman Ayers?
Nothing, thank you.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
No, thank you, Your Honor.
Wow, almost clean sweep here. I have no comments. It's recommended the council go into executive session to discuss the employment of a public official. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fars, and a second by Vice Mayor Lewis. Call the roll.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion passes seven-zero.
Hey, Richard, are we gonna have to come back for those...